I'd like to call the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Thursday, January 22nd, to order. In attendance are regular members Gildenzy, Leskovic, Gunn, and alternate member Holkin, Will Beating, and Member Dulak. First order of business is the minutes from January 8th. Does everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes?
We might want to change my name.
Yeah, change Charlie's name. It's the only thing I have.
Where's that?
It says William Gunn.
Oh, up at the top, Will Call.
Charlie Gildenzy.
Oh, I didn't know we got to do this. Thank you.
There was a motion. Is there a second, for Paul?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
That passes three to zero. Phil and I abstained on that.
Do I have to sign anything?
I don't sign anything. I don't sign anything. What's this for?
Just so that I know what that was.
Oh, okay. Okay, first order of business is a public hearing. PZ Application 2014-15-5.
So do we have to continue?
That's a continuation?
Yes, a continuation.
So where do we stand with that?
So it's a continuation of a public hearing.
Okay.
And so you have the application here.
Yep.
Hello, I'm Attorney Felipe Passfor. I practice in East Haven at the law firm of Cohen and Akomora. So the majority of the hearing was conducted last month.
Can you tip the mic up? There you go.
Some of the members have changed here. I would assume that the members are familiar with what went on through the minutes, listening to the tape, looking at the exhibits.
If not, they'll abstain.
Okay, because everyone has to come up to speed reasonably on that.
Yep.
Last time we were here, the biggest concern was an amendment that was proposed to 54.1, which for on-premises consumption, which is restaurants, bars, and things like that, there was a removal of almost all distance regulations within the ordinance. In response to those concerns of citizens, I proposed a simple change that will in fact allow regulation of on-premises consumption in the same manner that it was regulated before, so that on-premises consumption will be at least 1,500 feet away from any church, synagogue, college, school, park, or town hall, playground, but when there's a state highway, that is reduced to 400 feet. So I have a new document here that has a bolded addition to the additions, which is highlighted in yellow as a distinction. There's no other change other than that yellow highlighted change. So you can rely on that.
Same thing. Here we have.
Did you want to hand out these?
No.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
So that was something that was of great concern to almost everyone that spoke last month. I made a change to that. This original change was discussed with the town planner. We thought it was a good idea. That's the purpose of a public hearing, to see what people think. You know, before that, we were before you four times. That was a public meeting, so there wasn't any input from the citizens, so we really couldn't get any feedback from that. So that's an adjustment that I think that you could consider that resolves the concerns about on-premises consumption. I didn't know if there was anything else from the last month's hearing that somebody
What's that?
So I'll just add some comment to this while you guys are looking this over. When Felipe dropped this off, because he dropped off the same version last Friday, my only initial reaction was, I'm not sure that we would need to add... There's a few different ways of saying the same thing. So if the concern, based on the last public hearing, was that we should, that the regulations should regulate distance from a church, synagogue, school, et cetera, to a restaurant, one other option is to leave the language in 54.1 alone, so that it would read that the regulations shall apply for consumption on or off premises. And then instead, down below, when you talk about location, under 54.4.2, there could be a phrase added that would say, "No liquor outlet shall be located less than 1,500 feet from an establishment with the same class permit, except for on-premises consumption." So that would exempt restaurants from that distance requirement, so that a restaurant could exist next to a restaurant when they have the same class permit. That's essentially saying the same thing.
Same thing, just in a different position.
Just fewer words. It seemed a little bit more straightforward.
That was your suggestion?
Yes. Accomplished as the second thing.
Yep.
I think maybe clarifying, because right now it says, "Go to this section, go to that section, go over here, and look back over there, go over here," and try to find out what you're actually reading. It's kind of confusing. So what you're trying to do is having allowance of restaurants that are side by side?
Yes.
So make this stated what you want to do, really, because it appears it says, you know, "Consumption on premises not regulated in the section of 54 of zoning," other than ordinance 54.4.1, and go back over here. It gets confusing after a while. To state what exactly what they want to do, make clear, specify, and listen to the back between one ordinance and another. Each ordinance should stand by itself, right?
Yeah, I think to Carrie's point, right?
Yeah, the planner's point, exactly.
For Carrie's. That was her point, that clarified.
Now, this also says it's 500 feet, so we're eliminating the 400, the reduction 500 to 400 now?
That's one of the proposals, yes.
Let me ask you, what is the object of reducing from 500 to 400? Are we doing this for a specific reason, or what is the reason?
I'm going to link that to the town to explain. This is a global proposal to fix a number of problems that the town is having and to make this stand on its own for the present development of the town, the way the town has developed, and the use of smart growth to prevent sprawl. But there are a number of issues that the town is facing, I'm sure this board is well aware of it, that also, in addition to helping the town in their economic development and meeting the Plan of Conservation and Development, which this board put forth, it resolves some issues as well. But I'll link that to the town.
The issues, what I want to know, do you know which are issues?
Existing businesses that...
That are within 500 feet.
That are within, less than 500 feet from a church or synagogue.
And then this regulation change, when I first met Felipe and Attorney Akomora, there was question again about the measurement and how the measurement is done. So that's what spurred this whole regulation change, is how measurement is done, to clarify that it needs to be done in a straight line. And also, then we started talking about distance and existing businesses that are not in compliance, and also ability to promote economic development through a number of ways. Just looking at the town's development and how the town centers are developed, and that churches and schools do exist within business zones, and also the fact that with the 1,500-foot limitation, it really eliminates the possibility for restaurants to exist within 1,500 feet of each other if they have the same class permit.
True. And you know, there's a lot of, I'll call them, I'm not going to call them non-traditional, but how about non-traditional buildings that churches sometimes inhabit? You know, in a strip mall, it's not unusual to find a church now. Now that's going to cause a problem in a town like this. There's not so many areas that these kinds of uses can exist, where a church can exist in all zones. You know, so if you have a church in a storefront, boy, that's going to bring a problem to you.
Would a church in a storefront be a special zone application?
I believe churches are, as of right, in all zones.
Right. So that could...
So if you had a strip mall with a restaurant on both ends, and the church wanted to move into the middle, it would violate that order?
The restaurants, my initial reaction is that the restaurants would become pre-existing, non-conforming. So that meaning that they...
The restaurants were there first.
Right. But if a restaurant closed, or a new one wanted to come in, and the church is already there, they would have to be at least 500 feet under the current regulations from that church.
They couldn't reopen under hardship saying it's already there?
So just to talk with the commission briefly, just about the process. So this is the second public hearing. The commission has the option to keep the public hearing open, to see if there's more comments or more questions. We could close the public hearing and then have, you know, the commission discuss the regulations. I could draft something and then propose it to you for review. At the close of the public hearing, yeah, thank you, at the close of the public hearing, we would have 65 days to render a decision.
Can I ask a question? So just reading your summary, I know the cog you got back to you, but you're still waiting for the police department and town attorney? Anything on those two?
Correct, nothing.
Okay.
So that's kind of the advantage of having, you know, another 65 days to render a decision. I can reach back out to them, see if they have comment, feedback. We can, you know, review.
I would not object to the closing of the public, unless someone has...
Well, we're going to...
I was speaking in general, I'm not saying this moment. The closing of the public hearing, I would not object to the town attorney or the police department submitting something after the public hearing was closed. I would not object to that consideration. Normally we'd keep that open, but I have no problem. I'm not going to rebut something that the town attorney or the police department says there, in their opinion.
I got a question on 54.4.3. When you talk about a retail commercial center that contains a building of 14,000 gross square feet on the first floor...
Yes.
That could be just one building?
That would be one building.
Well, I know, I think, would you imagine, or what I imagine is, something like that would be a, like, more like one of our areas that have multiple businesses in it.
Yes, you have three in town right now.
But in this case, it could be just one building.
It could be.
Like, one retail building of, like, retail sales.
It could be. You know, Carrie and I discussed that. In town presently, there's three locations. There's one in Northford Center, there's one in Jabal, the Dairy Queen Center, I don't know that...
Sunset Plaza.
Next to Firehouse, and the Big Y, Plaza.
So Carrie, I just have a question. Is there any advantage to closing it?
No.
I appreciate that you don't object to it, but I don't know, is there any advantage to closing it? We might as well, for me, we might as well keep it open until we hear back, right?
Yes.
So everything comes into the record, and then we give the public a chance to comment, whatever it might be.
Yeah, I agree.
Great. We can go one more meeting. We can go until February 12th, and we have one more meeting between now and then to keep it open.
So for me, I mean, I'm curious to hear what the town attorney, police department has to say.
Yeah.
Even if it's, they have no comment, but it'd be nice to get their feedback.
I still got to get this one down. Yep.
Does anyone have anything else for me? I'll let everyone else speak.
The location requirement for that 14,000 square foot now, that could be within the 400 yard, I mean, 400 feet?
Yes.
Now, my testimony from last meeting, I spent three hours with the town planner, using the town's GIS system. We made very careful measurements as to all of the zones that would allow a liquor use, we've measured everything. There's really, other than one location in Northford Center, there's nothing that could be affected.
The only other one that comes to mind, and this was actually raised at the last public hearing, was the town is looking to redevelop 1599 Foxen Road, which is the old town hall and community center. There is a church on Notch Hill Road. The front door is on Notch Hill, but if you, again, measure in a straight line from the closest corner of the building to a potential redevelopment on 1599, that could be within, you know, 400 feet, 500 feet.
That could certainly be taken care of in the redevelopment plan, or, you know, there could be a restriction for uses or distance uses in there that would be binding on any occupant in that, or even if it was going to be transferred to a development corporation or something that the town of North Branford controlled, those kinds of restrictions could most certainly be placed there.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll open up to the public.
Thank you.
Yes, I don't know.
We're clarifying. The red, what's been changed in?
The only thing that the larger text handout that I gave out tonight is my suggestion that makes the same change that Carrie made, but perhaps Carrie's is more eloquent, that somehow allows a regulation on-premises consumption for distance.
But I asked about the 400, 500 foot regulation. It's not changing, but it said it is changing.
The regulation itself is not changing. It's just taking, it's applying to more things than it used to. Now it applies to on-premises.
You say it's 500 to 400?
400.
Does trade these... That's my question.
There's a proposed reduction.
Does trade these 500 to 400?
Yes, there's a proposed reduction.
If you look at, I don't know if you look at my planner's report, on that first page...
Yeah, well, I asked the question before, and he said it wasn't going to change.
I thought...
Were you going to submit?
This, oh, great.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking if I had changed it subsequent to my submission. No, my proposal isn't changed, yes. I'm sorry for misunderstanding your question.
So these bullets, just to look through them, it talks about, you know, how these proposed regulation changes would impact a restaurant, bar, or other establishment that serves alcohol, and then the next section talks about package stores.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll open up to the public.
Thank you.
Thanks. At this time, if any members of the public would like to come and speak, just state your name, your address, and your comments.
Good evening. Chris Crannick, 49, Cortland Drive. I guess there's two parts of this that I want to talk about. The first part of the 1,500-foot separation between onsite consumption and offsite, I think would be great to change, to make our town more competitive. I think the marketplace should determine that. I don't think we should prohibit one type of restaurant opening closer to another one. So I'm fine with that. But taking our onsite, which is the restaurant, which is now 500 feet from a church or a synagogue or a school, and making that 1,500, I don't see any reason to do that. We're opening ourselves up to a nightclub, possibly, being next to a church, or a school, or a synagogue. I don't see any reason to do that. Neighboring towns for onsite restaurant consumption are 500 feet, and they're measured corner to corner instead of front door, so their onsite zoning is even tougher than ours. So why are we taking ours to 1,500 feet? I don't think that makes any sense at all. I think that opens a door for inappropriate businesses too close to a school or a church. So that's the way I feel about that first part. So I'd ask you to consider that seriously. The second part, there seems to be some confusion as to why this is being proposed. An existing liquor store vacated one area of Northford and went to another, and seeked the permission of the town to do so, and was granted permission, I believe in an ordinance or variance. It was never measured, and it was found out to be 400 feet from the congregational church, so it was in violation. So injunction had to be put on that liquor store. So that is why it is being changed from 500 feet to 400 feet, because it was at one location, a liquor store for 50 years, and it was moved, granted permission by the town incorrectly. That person had to file an injunction, and it is now in violation. No. I'm okay if, you know, that's the past, mistakes happen, but that's why we're here. And I do agree with Carrie that it's a good time to readdress, make our consumption regs more competitive. So I'm okay with changing it to 400 feet to allow for the mistake of the past. I'm okay with getting rid of 1,500 for competition of both liquor stores and restaurants, but I'm quite against dropping the regs from 500 to 1,500 for restaurants and nightclubs. And I ask you to consider that.
I think, just to clarify, right, I think what you mean, I know exactly what you're saying, is the five, dropping the 500 to zero.
Zero.
So that the distance from a church, synagogue, school to a restaurant would not be regulated.
Oh, it's going down to zero?
It was 500 before, it wasn't 1,500.
I thought you just made the amendment to make it to 1,500, because you was concerned with the public having a problem with that, so it went to 1,500.
I don't look at that.
No.
So you're still considering it being zero?
Well, that's what the original proposal...
I'm still very much against that.
Right. And Felipe's new proposal is to regulate distance, regulate the distance of a restaurant from a church or school, and bring that to 500, or to 400.
Maintain it.
Maintain it.
So the liquor stores, 400, going to be changed, and what about the restaurants and bars?
Would also be regulated.
To what distance?
To 400.
I thought your, I thought your summary says it's not.
I don't think...
Your summary says it's not.
That was before this...
Oh, okay, reasonable. I see.
If you don't, if you, yeah, oh, no. Can you clarify?
It's 500 feet, unless it's separated by a state highway, and then it's 400 feet.
We can't jerry-rig this.
Wait, if you, Chris, you know how it works.
So in the testimony from last month, last time, you know, the reason that that came up is because the town is developed in a very narrow and long way. It's, unfortunately, it has a lot of, a lot of open space they're trying to preserve, and very little commercial space that is not very deep. But as a physical barrier, when you're walking, if you were going to contemplate crossing Route 22, I mean, that is, that is quite a physical barrier. That is not like, you know, you're walking with, it is not like you're walking on a sidewalk and you're just going to walk, you know, around the corner. That's a strong physical barrier. This is an attempt to preserve the development of the town without creating sprawl, without taking creep along the road, so that places that are now currently rural along Route 80, along Route 22, all of a sudden creep into being a commercial space. This is, that's what this is headed at. There has to be some kind of adjustment in a town that's growing, that started, you know, 180 years ago. There has to be some kind of give and take in order to preserve the character of the town. That's the give and take. You know, that's what the Plan of Conservation and Development says. Those are the points that I went through last time here. Page after page after page, they're saying the same thing. This commission approved that Plan of Conservation and Development. This ordinance is in furtherance of that.
Just for the record again.
Chris Crannick, 49, Cortland Drive. I just want to be clear that eliminating the 1,500 distance between liquor stores onsite, I mean, offsite and onsite, it should go both ways. I don't think it's just for the restaurants. I think that should be removed, the bars as well. But this, I know for a fact that VFW wants a liquor license, right, in the center of Northwood. So I think we're jerry-rigging our regulations to fit VFW for a state road, and I just don't think it's the way to go about making zone reg changes. I think they should be made based on the principle, if you want to be competitive, get rid of the 1,500 foot, but I think we should ensure that offsite and onsite should be a distance from churches and schools of 500 feet. If you want to do 100 feet for the one bar mistake that was made, then that's reasonable. But I don't think you could do zone planning based on what commercial buildings are where in town right now. I mean, new developments can come on board, churches can move. You can't do regulations that way. So respectfully, I ask you to consider my concerns.
How are you? Tom Delacchio, my family owns 847 Forest Road in the center of Northwood, St. Just have a couple few, a couple questions here this evening. First off, I do agree with Carrie, the proposed changes made by the town liquor store, I think are very confusing in this section 54.1. It goes down to state in the very first sentence that it pertains, the regulations shall apply to any business where alcohol, liquor, wine, beer sold in retail for consumption off premises. And I think it's, the original language in your current regulations are much clearer, where you clearly state it applies to go on and off premises consumption. I think you all certainly want to make that distinction. I think that we all agree with that. Why the full print in red where it starts with consumption on premises is not regulated in this section? Well, that certainly is not true. What is being proposed here is that it is indeed going to be regulated in section 54. And what he's saying is that, in his opinion, that only 54.4.1 should apply. So that sentence is not correctly worded. Unfortunately, I don't even see the need for it, because if you correct the mistake in the first sentence reverting the on and offsite consumption, and indicate that this section clearly applies to go on and offsite, there really is no need for that sentence in red, because it's very confusing. It says consumption on premises is not regulated in this section 54. Well, indeed it will be. It will be regulated by section 54.4.1, and it may be regulated by other parameters in this regulation that's proposed. And once again, the special use permit, there really isn't any need for that, as I mentioned last time. The town regulations currently require a special use permit for all food establishments that are proposing to serve liquor. So that entire section in red, that second sentence, I'm just not sure there's any need for that. Maybe someone could explain that to me. What I do, just pass out your current regulations on permitted uses and... Just pass out your current regulations on permitted uses in the special ordinance?
Can we get an extra set so we can enter them into the, into the record?
I've got an extra set, yeah.
You have mine.
Basically, if you look at these, you'll see there isn't any change in the curbs for your special use permit and your proposed. And it said there really isn't any need for that second, second sentence in red because it's currently your requirement in your current regulation. There just isn't a change. Why we're introducing that special use permit provision, I don't really understand why because it's already in the regulations and I don't really see a need for it. I'm going to try to go through these section by section because I think it's easier that way. Section 54.2, as I mentioned last time, curb regulations define fixed points for the measurement, point of a building or premise. What, what Mr. Felipe has proposed is the front door measurement, the front door measurement. And I certainly don't recommend that. There were some problems in Milltown a few years ago in a commercial shopping plaza, the front door of any establishment, the plate glass store can be relocated for a very minimal expense, a few thousand dollars. And that's exactly what happened in Milltown where they just kept moving the entrance. And so, you know, I think your regulations as they exist are fair. They define fixed points that can't be moved. Certainly the church isn't going to move its front door. The school is not going to move its front door. But there's nothing that prevents the commercial plaza from relocating its front door. And it came down for a few thousand dollars, so.
Do we care if he moves his front door to meet the regulations?
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm saying. It's just a suggestion and you may not, but you may, depending on how close he is to the school or to the church, you may or may not require, you know, be concerned about it, but it could be a concern depending upon the proximity of the building to the church or school. And if you were to simply, that's why I think it's best that you have a fixed point, a fine fixed point.
But if somebody's that close, they can always also go for a variance too.
Those are usually difficult to obtain, you know.
It's an option.
Would the front door be a fixed point?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it could be moved down a commercial building, right? The plate glass windows, they can just simply move through.
But a fixed point then?
It is a fixed point, but it's, it's, it could be relocated. Unlike-
Corner of the building.
The corner of a building or the corner of a premise, that you just can't relocate that. And that's my point. Now, the other, the other distinction I want to make here too is as far as the, as far as the measurement goes in 54.2, I'm just going to pass out some regulations here from surrounding towns. Right, so if you look at the measurement requirement, the current measurement for North Branford of the surrounding towns, Durham, Northfield do not have any regulations. The reason for that is explained at the last meeting is that they're currently permitted districts or the liquor establishment uses are permitted are not located in proximity to their schools and churches. So there was no need for them to regulate their separate distances. And that's not the case in Northford, Clinton, Gilford and East Haven because of the proximity of their business districts after the regulations were enacted, their business districts drew around their churches and schools. So they needed to enact separated distances to protect the schools and the churches. And if you look at those three regulations for Clinton, East Haven and Gilford, they all use a 500-foot separating distance. And so they just want to make that point clear. But it's, it's not arbitrary. It seems to be the standard whether you reduce it or not to 400. That's certainly your choice, your prerogative. The only thing I want to point out in the measurement, you'll see that in all those towns, in North Branford, you measure currently from the nearest corner of the building of the liquor outlet to the nearest corner of the school or the nearest corner of the church. The other towns are actually more restrictive. What they use, they measure from the property line of the school and church to the closest corner of the building. So just keep that in mind. And North Branford is currently the least restrictive in regarding the location of package stores than all the other surrounding towns. And I just want to point out in Felipe's measurement that, you know, I think you should be consistent, whatever you decide to go with, if it's going to be from the property line that you're measuring, from the property line at school or church or from the building corner of the school or the church, that you be consistent. In his proposals of year 54.2, he's showing that he wants it to be measured from the property line of the school but from the corner of the building of the church. So I think you need to be consistent in 54.2. If you decide you're measuring from the property line, it applies equally to both the school and the church. If you're deciding that you're measuring from the nearest corner of the church or the nearest corner of the school, that that is also consistent because there is an inconsistency there. I just want to point out that the town, I mentioned this last week, the town of Clinton just recently enacted their regulations. That took effect January 15th. They currently do not have separated distances from schools and churches to their liquor outlets. They just recently enacted that. What you seem to see is a trend in that a lot of the towns, as Felipe suggested, as change occurs, these business districts expand. And so there is a need for these towns to react to that and a lot of them have that. And I believe East Haven's was reinstated in 2001, Clinton just January 4th, 15th, and, you know, to protect the schools and the churches. They want to preserve, preserve that protective boundary. And so they certainly, I think you're seeing there's clearly a trend going in that direction and because of the development, you know, currently in the building arena and the expansion of these business dogs. Now, the other thing is, just keep in mind too, there also is a trend, it seems to be the elimination of the 1,500-foot rule. And we'll, we'll talk about that at my presentation in a few minutes. Let's see, 54.3, just quickly, once again, you know, I'm not sure what is probably this change, but there seems to be, in a lot of these proposals, 54.3, 54.5, there seems to be an emphasis placed upon the permit holder. That currently is not something that zoning laws regulate. Zoning laws regulate property use. And they, a lot of these proposals here are focusing on the permit holder, but you cannot regulate. And the reason for the change in 54.3 is he, he wants you to focus on a permit holder because it allows him, once you start focusing on a permit holder and you can't regulate that, you, it allows him to, in 54.5, the relocation of any liquor outlet. It allows the existing permittee to relocate anywhere within a 1,500-foot boundary and bypass all the regulations of section 54, which doesn't make any sense. As I indicated, your, your focus should be on regulating property use. That's what zoning law does. It, it has no bearing on the permittee. If you like, try to regulate the Dunkin' Donuts franchisee permittee. I mean, you, your focus is on the zoning regulations and the use of the property. And so that 54.3 and 54.5, you know, allowing the permittee, permittee to bypass all the regulations is not approved yet. Just want to share a map of, you know, some of the things that we're talking about here Basically, you know, what I, had my engineer here, we just kind of sketched out a 400-foot, 500-foot radius from the churches and did not include the radius from the schools in the center because it was just, when you threw that out there as well, it really confused things. But the key node here is the 1,500-foot radius, if you see that. And basically it encompasses the entire center. It goes up Route 22. I mean, 500 feet is a rather large area and to just allow, you know, the non-regulation of liquor outlets within that 1,500-foot zone, it's quite expensive. And, and let me say, your focus is on the regulation of property uses, so please don't be confused by the emphasis being placed on the permittee. Again, to the 54.4.1, this, this is a key point and so it's certainly your choice whether you want to go 500 or 400. I personally, you know, it's, it's your choice. My, my emphasis is on the 1,500-foot rule. But I think, just so you understand, the 500 feet is not based upon ease of access to the church. It's based upon the negative impacts that these liquor outlets have, whether they be bars or pubs or taverns or package stores and the native advertising that it has a negative impact on the young adults attended congregated places of public gathering. It has nothing to do with restricting access to these stores. I mean, do you really, the regulation was not intended, if you, you know, 200 feet from the playgrounds or schools, you have children, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12s playing soccer, baseball, do you really think the concern is focused on whether or not those children are going to have access to the beverage store? Of course not. The, the regulation is, if you read the state statute, it's based upon detrimental fact. And that was the intent of the regulations. None of, none of the other towns had any provisions about highways or crossings or anything of that nature. And the reason for that is because it, that was never the intent of the regulation to discourage access. It was to discourage the negative impact that these establishments have on the church over, just the way that they banned cigarette advertising and so forth a few years back. So just keep that in mind. And the other thing to keep in mind, the Clinton crossing issue, they just recently added their regulation 500 feet. There's a four-way highway there that separates the area that they're concerned about from Morgan High School. So that's a, it's a key point, you know, it, it has nothing to do with limiting access. I mean, every person going to a package store or bar should be carded and it's regulate, you know, there's state laws that regulate that. And that, that's, that's how access is prevented. And that, that's not the intent of this regulation. All right, and the last thing here, the 54.4.3, once again, you know, this is another provision where, and I mentioned this last time, I call the box store provision. It allows anyone within a larger, a, a package store or bar or that wanted, that was 2,000, had 2,000 square feet, would have to be compliant with section 54. However, if you have a building that's 14,000 square feet and you wanted to put a bar in you or a package store of 8,000 square feet, they, they could bypass all the regulations. That, that to me just doesn't make any sense. It, and one thing I mentioned last time, the town of Durham does a good job with this. What they do is they actually restrict a square footage of some of their buildings to preserve the rural character of the town. And so I, I would like to see this in reverse and when I share some of my proposals with you in the, in the next public hearing, I suggest to be a size limitation on some of the stores, bars, so maybe limit it to 3,000 square feet just to preserve the rural, rural character, preserve the non-box, so you don't get the big discount liquor stores or the large, you know, like Hooters or something like that coming in and it circumvents some Okay, and the last thing is, like I said, my, my big, my big concern is a 1,500-foot rule. I will speak to that later. But at the last hearing, Felipe mentioned this on several occasions. So, you know, he kept bringing up the fact that St. Andrew's Church did have a problem with this and he had submitted the letter and indicating so. I believe that the first public hearing, someone in the hearing testified to that, which is fine. But I just wanted to let you know that that was an exhibit at the court hearing. I just, I just want to circulate that so you realize that that letter was submitted as part of a court exhibit. It was basically given no credence by the judge. And the reason for that is that these regulations are designed to protect the public interest of the entire community, not just the patrons of the liquor store, grabbing to be board members of the church. And that, that was a big concern when it came up in court. And just keep that in mind that this is in, you know, and I don't want to make this focus just on this issue of Northford Center. I'm certainly, well, you know, I think change is good and, you know, if you guys choose to go with the 400 feet, that's perfectly fine. But I'd also like you to, you know, strongly reconsider the elimination of the 1,500-foot if you do that.
Carrie, when I measure from playgrounds, the 500-foot rule, how's that measured from a playground?
In the current regulations, the measurement from a playground would be from the boundary of the playground.
What about the parking lot supply that's part of the playground?
Sorry?
What about the play, the parking lot supporting the playground?
It would be from the parcel boundary, so the parking lot would probably be encompassed in the parcel. So it would be, it would be from the parcel boundary of the playground.
Looking at-
The nearest boundary.
So you've got the, in the old school, which is a playground, right? You've got a parking lot there?
Well, so that's an interesting question because schools have playgrounds. So if there's both on a parcel, I would, I would say I would measure from the school because that's the structure.
There's no longer a school.
What's the primary release, you get a primary release type of regulation?
Me, right, I mean-
So the playground on its property, the parking lot would be the bound, the boundary edge?
It's a, it's a good question. I mean, the use had, the use has changed. So it had been a, a school where you would measure from the building, but now that it's no longer a school, it's a park, I guess, or a playground.
Right.
So you'd measure from the boundary.
So the new use, just like a church moving into a building, would become the new use.
So then, you know, someone could argue the pre-existing non-conforming if they fall within that 500 feet.
Yeah, and I think that's the reason for the changes, you know, the 400 feet, 500 feet. There are a lot of changes being proposed to accommodate the expansion of these business districts as the towns grow. And that's what's happening in all these towns. Clinton, that's recently enacted a variance and they're all reevaluated now. Okay, and I, like I said, I have the deal on the 1,500-foot rule later this evening. So I'll speak to that at that time.
My name is Mark Bauslander, 75, Berthford Drive, Northford. I'm sitting here tonight, I'm very surprised to hear Hooters mentioned again. Can I, I called the franchise because I wanted to know, we're talking here about a company with a sizable amount of money and influence doing whatever they- an influence, doing whatever they please, moving into a town, and not going by the rules. That's basically what he's trying to say. Now, I called them up, I called this Janice Kearns. Now, she tells me that what they look for is they need to have at least 100,000 people within the three or five-mile radius of the location. And so happens that the population in 2010 here in North Ramford was 14,407 people. That was an increase of approximately 3.6% since you're 2,000. Also, they said that across 75,000 for the franchise, you need to spend between 1.3 to 1.7 million for each location, okay? And the franchise is $75,000. So I think the evidence is pretty clear here that nobody with that kind of investment is going to ever move into North Ramford, or Northford, for sure. So I just felt that I had to say this tonight, because Hooters has brought up again, that we're basically talking about is large corporations pretty much coming into town and doing what they want to do, okay?
Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, Vincent Mace, Gale Drive in Northford, Connecticut. Um, I support reducing the 500-foot to 400 feet for, uh, for the applicant. You know, uh, I kind of think, common sense approach, um, mean what you say and say what you mean. Northford Center, wherever we're lucky, because we have two highways, 17 and 22 cross, like in the next. So the traffic there is, is pretty good. And as one of the objectors came up and talked about the, uh, the impact it would have on, on the neighborhood, uh, let me see what he said about the regulation. Evidently, his persuasive argument was that the state statute is based on a detrimental effect of the neighborhood. But let's look at what we're talking about. At 847 Forest Road, there was a liquor store there for 50 years. All he did was go from here to here. So how could there be a change if there was detrimental impact for 50 years? How would there not be a detrimental impact? It just wouldn't happen. And I know that you guys have been sitting here listening to all these tales and all these exhibits that you have to, have to look at. But I'm asking, what was the original intent of the ordinance of 500 feet? It was to protect the church. But the church, as it bound itself, they do not object to it. So the so-called victims that he was charged with protecting are telling me here, it's simple, we're going to be different. I do know...
Let me ask you a question, I interrupted. You're picking out one specific example. Remember, this rule affects the whole town of North Ramford. So you might be focused on one particular area, but the, this doesn't. This is the whole thing. So whether it's one church, if that, if the individuals at that church leave, and another church goes in its place, who might not, that, that might not be what they're looking for. So we have to take, we have to look at this as a whole, not just one individual place. And that's what we have to do. There's multiple locations, there's other, uh, properties that this has an effect on. So maybe you're, you know, there might be a focus on a specific property, but that's, we're looking at it as a whole. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that.
I understand that. I'm going to respond to that. Because I did talk about Brady, I did talk about the church in North Ramford, to look at this location next to the funeral home. Is that the church we're talking about?
There's two, yeah.
Okay. And also, you talked about the old town hall, and how it would be within the distance if you went from, uh, because the town hall faces Foxon Road, and the church faces, uh, 31, 22, all right? But what this here proposal does, it says, if it's separated by a highway. Now, if I look Brady, and I pass the town hall, and then I take a right, well, there is no highway that's separating a proposed package store and a church. So somebody would not be able to open up a package store, because it says it would have to be 400 feet if separated by a highway. So if somebody had to open a package store on that side, they would have to go to the 500-foot mark, which is what you're, what you're saying. So, so I, I have...
And there's also, there's also some future, you, you can't predict the future either. So we, that's what we have to do. We look at it across the board. What's existing, what's possible as well, what makes sense. So just, you know, just so everybody knows that we're not just focusing on what we're doing here on one particular property. We have to take it, look at it as a whole.
Let me say this. I heard a lot of talk up here tonight about what Clinton does, and what Easton does, and what Guilford does, and what Durham does. And I'll be honest with you, I, I really don't care what they do. Because if I cared what they did, I would have moved out home most times 30 years ago. I care what they do. I care how we move around in town, all right? So I've been here 30 years. And I've grown up the town. I'm not a new competitor. I didn't just pull off the, the, the bike and just enter the town last year. Been here 30 years. Ultimately, I showed up from the school system, through state team, I was here with Robert T. again, with Ripford T. again, in high school. So I'm working on that. So I'm working on the town. And I'm already working on the growth. And I am, I'm already working on the Northford Center, because that's where I do most of my business, in the Northford Center. So although I can't really get the work paper side, naturally, my primary focus is what would you do to keep the Northford Center viable? And one way to keep Northford Center viable for the future is to reduce this here by 100 to 400 foot. That's the only way to the future. Now, I could go to the arcade days of, you know, where you were selling all the stores for booze, and you could rent it down someday, and what has happened since then? The culture has moved, because we're here, they're looking for revenue, so, so, so someday, the package stores are open now, everybody's open now. So I do look at the viability of the town. And I think reducing it from 500 feet to 400 feet with a provision, the state highway as an obstruction, all right, be a part of it, because in that particular center of Northwood, you've got two highways coming together. So the traffic up there, all right, sort of protects, or the, the church from how many negative impact? And I'm all honesty. Do you, I really don't think that parishioners sit on the steps of the church and look at the package store across the street, say, oh, John Smith went in there twice today, what do you think about that? Or, so, so, they don't do that there. They're very well aware of what's going on up there, and they don't object. And that's why I'm in support of reducing it to 400 foot. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Would anybody else like to speak? Phil, if you want to rebuttal?
Thank you. I, I put significant testimony into the record, and I'm going to rest on the majority of that. I didn't realize that Mr. Del Vecchio was going to speak again and make another presentation. I do rest on my previous testimony, but I do want to say one, one thing, I want to clarify something. You know, the regulations from other towns are interesting to look at. But you have to consider the makeup of those towns, the physicality of those towns, the population of those towns. And you have to consider this document, which is the Plan of Conservation and Development. Each town under 8-23 and 8-2 has to have a Plan of Conservation and Development. This particular plan was adopted by this board in 2009. It set out how this town is going to deal with moving into the future. What are we going to do to preserve land and to develop land, to put it simply? I cited 11 places in my last testimony where the changes that I'm proposing in front of you now, or some version of them, are absolutely consistent with the terms and objectives of this plan. When you cite something that Clinton did, or Guilford did, without the analysis of this plan of conservation and development that they have in Guilford, or they have in Clinton, or wherever the site happened, those regulations are, other than an interesting read, meaningless. So I just want to point out that this is your document, this is this board's document. These regulations are consistent with that. I'm not saying that these regulations as written should absolutely be adopted without change. I'm not saying any such thing. That's what this public hearing is for. But what I am saying emphatically, I reviewed this document, I read this voluminous document over and over and over, and I've met with the town planner. And this is completely consistent with the goals and policies of your own Plan of Conservation and Development. So I appreciate the chance to speak one more time. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? So seeing that they don't, we're, we're not going to close the public hearing. We'll leave that open.
Okay.
All right, everybody agreement on that?
Yep.
We'll keep it open until we get...
Right, do you want to February 5th?
Uh, is it the 5th?
Yes, that's the next meeting. So that would be the last opportunity for, to have the public hearing open, just because we have to, um, we can only have it open with it for 65 days.
Can I just make, so Carrie, or, I don't know if it's Carrie, Carrie or Felipe, so I think I heard that we all like Carrie's changed terminology. So I would like, I'm a visual kind of person, I'd like to actually see that changed.
Yes.
So if we can have that, so we can actually read it as we're going to be voting on it.
Yes.
Moving.
Okay.
So this public hearing will be continued until the February 5th, uh, regular plan zoning meeting. Do you need any of these for exhibits? Are you good with these?
Yes.
You got it? I don't know if you need the current one, even though I'm, you know, I don't think you can do that right here. All right, the next order of business is, uh, another public hearing, uh, planning zoning application 2014-15-8. I guess this is a continuation of a, this is a continuation of public hearing, uh, for the self-storage facilities.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Bob Criscolo, and, um, on January 8th, I appeared before you when I presented my draft regulations. To remind you, um, I felt compelled to come before you with these regulations, because self-storage units and developments of the like are not addressed in your current regulations. And all the units that are in existence in town are, have been approved through the variance process. And there are no specific design standards that one would apply for. And I wanted to come before you and present, uh, what I felt were regulations that would be betterment for the town, which you would have a controlled development for self-storage units. And I'm proposing to add, um, to your Schedule A, two line items, which would be 13.2, which would be self-storage units, um, in the industrial 2, in the industrials 3 zone, without outside storage as a matter of right, as a site plan approval and application. And also, uh, section Schedule A 13.3, which would be such facilities that would allow outside storage, uh, but that would be subject to a special use permit or a hearing, may I say. Um, two weeks ago, I presented, um, 31.3.6 in a very detailed, um, fashion. Just to summarize, I talked about the, what really a self-storage facility is. I have a definition. I talked about size. I went over the design parameters. And I also pointed out of 31.3.6, which are facilities without outside storage, that, uh, that they would not really be allowed. But I addressed lots of different things in here, from lighting, to landscaping, to setbacks. And, uh, since that time, I've received, uh, some comments, uh, from your staff. And I submitted a revised draft, and it's dated Jan, January 14th, 2015. And those set of regulations basically are the same as what I've submitted. But because there's redundancy in the self-storage facilities without outside storage, and the ones with outside storage, um, the second part of it, the 31 point, excuse me, the 41.13.6 was simplified to just address the outside storage part of it. So with that, I, I thought that this would be a good time to open it to questions that you may have, or the public. Or if you want, I could go into this again in more detail.
Is there anything we need to add to that? Did you cover everything, everything else before that? I mean, there's nothing, we're, nothing else seen from the town, or anything like that, right?
Correct. We're writing, um, comments back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. No, no, I just want to make sure we're, we hit everything.
Yep, and I've been working with Bob, as you mentioned, he submitted a revised, uh, draft, which you all have.
Right.
Based on the comments from the last meeting.
Yeah, this time, Bob, the commission's comfortable at this point. Uh, I was going to open, uh, for any public comment, if you have a comment on this public hearing, please, you can step up. It's seen none, so I, we can, we can, everybody good on the commission?
Yeah.
What's that?
Just give me a second.
Right, I think we're good. Bob, any last comments or anything, or?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're good. Uh, at this time, I am going to close the public hearing for PZ application 2014-15-8.
Do you need a motion, Frank?
What's that?
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
Do I need a motion? I haven't done one until now.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing on the, um, uh, the, the storage units, the self-storage facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If it passes 5 to 0. All right. So then the next, we're good for the next one?
Yes, and then we can take action down.
Then we can take action on the other one, correct. Uh, next order of business, public hearing, PZ application 2014-15-11.
First, the legal.
So this is, we, is this a continuation, or just a...
This is the first time.
Okay, it's the first time, so, uh, will you read it?
Yep.
Okay, don't be continuing.
Did I read everything?
I didn't realize there were going to be separate...
There, there's several applications, yep.
So where did this go to? Easy read where it went, right? Oh, the sound here, yeah. So this legal notice was sent and published in the sound on Thursday, January 8th, 2015, and Thursday, January 15th, 2015. I'll read it. Legal notice, North Ramford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the North Ramford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Thursday, January 22nd, 2015, at the North Ramford Intermediate School, 654 Foxon Road, North Ramford, Connecticut, to consider the following. PZ application 2014/15-11, proposed amendment to Section 54 alcoholic beverages of the North Ramford zoning ordinance, to modify the text of Section 54.4, location, applicant Dom Del Vecchio. At this hearing, all interests, all interested persons may appear to be... At this hearing, all interests, all interested persons may appear to be heard and written communication will be received. Copies of the above proposal are on file for public inspection in the Town Hall Planning Department. So December 29th, 2014, North Branford, Connecticut, Kerry Dulac, Chairman.
So, um, similar to the other propose, or regulation proposals, I circulated this to the town attorney, town engineer, police department, and the economic development commission. Um, they, I'll let the town engineer speak, but the economic development commission did not have a quorum at the, at their last meeting, so I didn't have direct feedback from them as a group, um, but I did hear from a few individuals that, you know, they're encouraging, obviously, economic development, so, um, they didn't have any issue with this proposal, and I have not heard from the town attorney or the, uh, police department. So similar to the last application, I can circle back with them.
I really have no comment, it, it's pretty straightforward, it's, it's a commission policy decision.
Do we have any, uh, the cards that you have to give us?
No, no, it's a text change.
Okay, just text change, yeah.
No cards, right.
All right. So the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dom Delvecchio, County Council, uh, goes here, and you're in the center. Um, Kerry, any other sort of procedural question? Um, the last meet, uh, last meeting, we had different members present, I'm just, uh, not certain who the alternates are, is, and how else can I give, because Ron was here last meeting, wasn't he, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, these are, this is a new, this is a...
I don't know, this is just going back, I'm just curious.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah, if, if a member's not here, they either get caught up, whether it's on the tape, or on, on TV, or they would, uh, recuse themselves from the vote, abstain from vote, if that's what, if that's what it was.
Now, can the all, can the alternates vote also?
In this case, in, in this case, he's, one of the regular members isn't here, so he's seated for this, uh, for this public hearing.
Okay, but, uh, in total, there could be no more than five votes, every town is different, that's what I was trying to, but...
Five.
Five, right?
So, just, sorry, I'm, sorry to interrupt, but one other thing, so I did receive, um, some signatures, um, with concern of passing this text amendment, so I'm just going to pass these down, these are just copies for each of the members.
Are these, are these two different ones?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I'll give this, I'll give you a copy, don't worry.
These are all letters?
Yeah.
Okay.
These, uh, residents of the town, or...
These came in, um, last Friday, um, it's, they are residents, excuse me, businesses, um, business names.
Harry?
Yep.
I've got a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
What was Mr. Delvecchio's application, because our agenda says it's section 54.4? Okay, thank you, Rick, I see where...
Yep.
The digits, okay.
Okay, I understand, okay. Basically, you know, I, I have a very abbreviated text amendment, it's really, uh, can be difficult to follow, but I'll just circulate, uh, some of the changes I proposed. My, uh, my text amendment speaks directly to 54.4.2, and that's regarding the, uh, 1500-foot rule, and the, that currently prohibits, uh, lifetime liquor establishments within 1500 feet of wine. So earlier, um, Attorney Pressler spoke that, and I'm not sure if this is clear, which I was only repeating this, and that his proposal, text amendment proposal, also proposes to exclude the 1500-foot rule for onsite consumption, so if your bars, taverns, restaurants, and so forth, is, you know, I'm not sure that's clear by reading this text amendment, that he is proposing to eliminate the 1500-foot rule for onsite consumption, and my proposal is a continuation of that, so that I would request that we also, uh, for consistency, carry that on into eliminate the 1500-foot rule for offsite consumption, which is basically a package store. And then that would also fit nicely into some of the changes we were talking about earlier regarding, uh, the current, your current regulations. Okay, the, uh, you know, the primary reason, uh, that the 1500-foot rule, I think you have to understand one point with this, is that typically, on your onsite consumption, your taverns, bars, clubs, whatever, and those present the most concerns for your police department, your citizens, you have, the most offensive use, it's, uh, you know, you have people that drink too much, become rolly and obnoxious, they drive home intoxicated, and Attorney Pressler is, you know, proposing to eliminate the 1500-foot rule for that, um, in favor of that, uh, I guess it's going to be really in favor of eliminating it for the package stores. And a package store is essentially a retail outlet. You, you shop, you purchase, and you go home. You don't have the same concern to do with the onsite consumption, it's, it fits to, in my opinion, it fits the use of the center better, it's more a retail use than typically to your onsite consumption, so I believe if we're eliminated for onsite consumption, it all makes sense that we also eliminate it for offsite. Now, the, the general thinking behind the 1500-foot rule is, um, you know, it was initially enacted to prevent undue concentration of liquor outlets, and, and my argument is that I, I believe that in today's society, there really isn't a use for it any longer. I think that the market forces, uh, will control the proximity of a liquor outlet to any onsite, whether it's offsite or onsite consumption, the marketplace through competition will dictate the proximity to these establishments to one another. The 1500-foot rule currently, in my opinion, serves only to discourage economic development, it's an attempt to regulate the marketplace, which is really not the goal, it's only regulations, it's only regulations are designed to regulate property use, and not to regulate the marketplace. In a free market economy, in a democracy, everything is based upon free competition in the marketplace. And so I, I think it's important to keep that, uh, thought in mind, if, uh, there are a number of, uh, the surrounding towns, and, um, I just wanted to point this out, strong towns of Durham, Madison, Clinton, East Haven, none of them have a 1500-foot rule for either onsite or offsite consumption. And basically, you, you don't see an undue concentration of liquor establishments in these towns, and the reason for that, whether it's onsite, offsite consumption, and that's why I agree with you, Bay, this, this is, I think, something that should be eliminated for not only the onsite, but the offsite, is that the market forces through competition control the proximity of these, uh, outlets to one another, whether it's onsite or offsite. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind is that, if there aren't any other businesses, if you look at any of the other towns, none of them have a 1500-foot rule. In the town of North Branford, this type of restriction only applies to, um, liquor outlets, and liquor outlets are one of the only few that are regulated by state regulation and limits the number of permits by population, and that's one of the means that, uh, the, the reason why, um, you don't need this 1500-foot rule, it's currently regulated by the State of Connecticut, you would have to obtain a permit, um, that's based upon population, the State of Connecticut is not trying to dictate proximity of stores to one another, it's, uh, and, and in this case here, as an example, a package store can be put in any uses, you could have a high-end wine shop, it's down in Madison, uh, several weeks ago, they had a nice high-end wine shop where they sold cheese, the primary focus of that business was on wine, high-end wine, and, uh, it, they, Madison does not have a 1500-foot rule, there was a package store nearby within 1500 feet, but they do, both of those facilities do require a lifetime permit, and so I think it's, uh, you know, it, I, I think it's, kind of, as far as, it makes no sense in the current marketplace, and I just, I just want to share with you, I have a case that I want to share with you, and this was just a recent case in Torrenton, like I said, currently, with the surrounding towns, I just want to emphasize that Durham, Madison, planning and state do not have a 1500-foot rule. Now, the case I'm going to introduce is a case that, uh, a couple of years ago was settled in, uh, Torrenton, and what happened is the town of Torrenton decided, planning zone information, the policy board decided that this 1500-foot rule basically was anti-business, it was, uh, you know, discouraged competition, it's poor for economic development, so they decided to eliminate the 1500-foot rule, and it was challenged by some of the local permittees, and, uh, what, what happened in this case is that it, uh, was fed a court challenge, and I just want to share the opinion, there's, there's a lot of good things in here about this, uh, 1500-foot rule. All right, what happened in this case, a court determined the planning zone was justified, and it was, uh, they determined essentially the planning zone, that the 1500-foot rule was no longer necessary in today's, uh, society, it was no longer needed, it outled its usefulness, and it now served only as an anti-competitive, uh, purpose. And, uh, it went on to say that, uh, you know, it was really essentially the only business, um, that has an anti-competition clause, it made no sense in a free market economy, it was being used to restrict competition between businesses, and, and not necessarily promote morals for the community. And it went, went on again, uh, once again, and discussed the fact that it is indeed, you know, state regulations does supersede, um, town regulations when it comes to the number of permits that are issued in town, but just keep in mind, it, you know, permits can be purchased, sold, relocated, it, it may not happen often, but it is, it does something that does improve, and, uh, and so I just think that, like I say, it's, I think this provision currently just discourages competition in the marketplace, it serves only one purpose to act as non-compete clause, and I think that's the reason that Philippe was proposing that it be eliminated for onsite consumption purposes, I'm just suggesting that we spend that to offsite, because I think it does have that ability to, um, discourage, uh, economic development, you could have lifetime permits with different uses that are not necessarily exactly the same as the indicated with high-end wine shops or the package store, that would require the, um, a simple lifetime permit. And if you go back to the map I gave you, you can see just how expansive that 1500-foot rule is, it essentially wipes out the entire center of Morford, and it would do so in any other location in the town of North Branford, whether it be the Big Y location, or any other location, that 1500-foot rule is rather, um, extensive, and if you, if you look at the map, you can see just how much of a restriction that places on the business, is whether, like I say, if you're restaurants, a smaller use, or not, but, uh, and, like I say, I think that's, uh, pretty much, you don't regulate any other business in town with a 1500-foot rule, whether it be gun stores, ammunition, gas stations, plants, it just, certainly, it's, uh, it seems to be something that has outlet that's usefulness, in my opinion, okay, that's it.
Got a question for you.
Yes.
Size limitation.
Yeah, okay, but basically, what I was trying to do there, here is, you know, if you eliminate the 1500-foot rule, this gives you some additional protection, the town of Durham has regulations like this on various stores, they limit the size of the stores, preserve the mom-and-pop store, and it preserves rural character, it also gives you a sense of town some additional control with that 1500-foot rule.
No, the question I was going to ask you is, why 3,000 feet, not, why not 2,000? Yeah, why, yeah, why, why not 2,000, why not 4,000?
I, I, it's just something that I, I kind of thought about, you know, what you might see as an average-sized store, uh, mom-and-pop store, and not a large discount store, similar to what Philippe I did when he picked out his 14,000 square foot.
But I mean, this also entails, uh, on-premises, you say 3,000.
Yes, currently, yes.
So do you, do you think the 3,000 for, uh, onsite, like a restaurant is, you know...
I, I think that's, you know, I, I don't think you'll find, uh, many restaurants of that size, but it could be, you could restrict it for, like I say, that's, uh, I'm just using some of the provisions of the town of Durham, that, you know, by community, and what that was the intent of it. One of the things I did want to point out in my provisions too, and I didn't see it in these proposed regulations, but I believe that, was I think if you look at the other bold print red on the measurement, that, I really do think they need a very specific statement that, uh, the distance shall be measured in a straight line without regard to, to, so it doesn't leave any confusion, and I think that it's, I think that Kerry had picked up on this at one point as well, that, uh, it'd be good to put that in your sound blocks, so there isn't any confusion on just how the measurement, uh, will be taken for the 400, 500-foot rule, or whatever it turns out to be.
At this time, I'm going to open up for a public comment, just state your name, your address, and...
Sure.
My name is Bob Anderson, I own Town Land Windows Beer, over on the other side of town, up 480, uh, by the, um, car wash near the Guilford line. Um, I just, a couple of things I want to address, one is that I have a, the current store I'm in is 4,000 square feet, um, I do not consider it a big-box store by any means, uh, it suits, suits me, in fact, I probably could use even...
What was the size again?
4,000.
4,000.
Um, the purpose, the other thing I want to address is, the purpose originally, when the state had, and at one time they did have the 1500-foot zoning, was to keep, if we sell, we're not selling speakers, we sell a controlled substance, and it was, the idea was to keep that down to the limit, where you didn't have the police departments and, and, and different people having to monitor so many facilities selling the same product. There basically isn't competition, they call it competition, but we have no volume buying in our business, they, you buy a case, you buy 100 cases, you buy 1,000 cases, it's the same price, all right? We have a, we have a re-regulation that's been done by the distributors that almost prevents competition, you can sell at what's called bottling, all right, which is the case, which is the bottle cost, should you buy an individual bottle versus the case cost. So, any one of us can sell a product for the same price as anybody in any store, no matter how many square feet it is. There's, there still is a built-in regulation by the distributors and by the state, uh, that allows the distributors to do this. So, the idea of the 1500 feet is just to stop a cluster, like having gas stations on every corner, a cluster of permits that basically are all doing the same thing without any real competition, it doesn't, it doesn't serve the public's interest to have a bunch of places or a bunch of permits serving the same products in a controlled substance, when there's minors that are involved, and again, that's our responsibility as permities to monitor this, but again, the more outlets you have, the more chances there are, I mean, people are going to bounce around, young people are going to bounce around trying to find who's got the soft spot, who's, who they're going to pull one over on, and we've dealt with this for years as permittees. Um, that's our responsibility, and because of that responsibility, we have a bit, we have businesses that we've invested money in, and in return for that responsibility, we've paid good money, a lot of us, for these businesses, and expect that when they, they're, our time comes to sell, that they have a value, based on the effort that we've put into those businesses. Um, creating a situation where, again, you have no regulation whatsoever for a controlled substance, and you have, you have permits, or you can have permits on every corner, or very close together, serves no purpose to the community, it's alcohol. As long as there's an establishment that's, that's close by, there's enough 1500 feet, 3,000 feet away, there's another one, it's not as though you have to travel that far should you not like the establishment that's close by you. It's not like we're saying you have to go 10 miles to get to the next one, it's, uh, 1500 feet is not that big a deal, it's just there in order to keep this kind of a cluster situation of package stores all in the same location, it just would serve no purpose, uh, and would, and would, in all honesty, would deflate the value of our businesses, which all of us that have them have worked hard... them have worked hard to keep, and look forward to selling someday, and getting what we believe, you know, is a fair market value for them. So there is, there would be damage done if you eliminate that 1500 feet. And I don't think it, there's a cultural need, or a need by the society to have more permits, and more people selling alcohol within the town. We have enough in the town of North Ramford. I think one more permit than is supposed to be by state law, right now anyway, and if that one closed up, I think there would even have to be one more closed up before someone could apply for another. So, again, we're dealing in a unique business. It's not the same business as selling sneakers, or shoes, or socks, or something like that. It is a controlled substance that has its own issues, and it's a unique business unto itself, even when it comes to competition. So, I just wanted to get that under wraps. Thank you.
Hi, Vincent Mace, BL Drive. I oppose the elimination of the 1500-foot. I live in Northford. I could literally, to my house, go across Old Turnpike, and go across Route 17, and the bottle for package store is right there. The bottle for package store is right from my back end, I can see it, all right? So we already have a bottle for package store in Northford, at the bottom of the hill, and we have Gold's Wines in Northford Center. We have two package stores already, within three quarters of a mile of each other. What I did hear tonight, from the applicant, how does having another package store increase the economic value of North Ramford? I haven't heard a motor vehicle come, I haven't heard a pedestrian come, I haven't heard anything that would add to the value of North Ramford. And it's not like, you know, if a celebrity comes in, they want to go down to Wisher Street to get the different meats pies and everybody else, and, I mean, nobody's going to come in and say, "Well, let me go to that new package store up on Forest Road," because Talibade just opened up, and he goes to the out. There's more value. Where's the added value? Where's the additional value to putting a package store here, and then you have probably within 125, 130 feet of each other? Here's what I do, based on my observation over my three years. A47, 400, there was a place, it opened up, while we had country cleaners. Didn't last too long, but one of them closed up. Putting another package store is only going to hurt somebody else, all right? Eventually, one of them will have to close up, because the amount of business is going to decrease through to one of them. So it wouldn't help. A lot of other retail outlets that, they can put into those vacant stores at A47. I mean, right now, we have a tobacco store, we have a subway, a Dunkin' Donuts. What happens? In the shopping center next door, they put in several Dunkin' Donuts or a tobacco store. Doesn't help the town of North Ramford to put in a Dunkin' Donuts store, it only hurts us. So please, when you're thinking about this here, there is no value to our town, and to the citizens, by having a sale, like the general force. They can't want a sale, they're controlled by the liquor commission, they can't want a sale. "Okay, we're going to have, by the way, we're going to reduce it to, you know, 50 cents a six-pack." That's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. They can't do it by state law. So I ask that you deny this applicant, let's get something into those stores that is really going to add to the value for North Ramford, the North Ramford citizens, that when they come home, they want to go to the center, well, whether it be a clothing store, a hardware store, or something that we can use, we're, we can shop. Not to go by some, no, thank you very much.
What do you have, it's last week?
Janet Rasmussen, 26th Street, Drive Northford. I wanted to indicate that I, the gentleman just told, I don't see any value to this 1500 feet for package stores, where I do see it as value for restaurants. We can have as many restaurants in town as we can get people to come on board. But if I'm reading the internet correctly, I saw that there are only five permits granted to the whole town for package stores. By saying that you can have one as close as 1500 foot to another, just hurts the person who's there. It doesn't help the town, because you can only have five. So I wasn't sure if folks were aware of the actual limitation. I heard the gentleman say there was a limitation, but there's only five. So to hurt the existing stores doesn't bring any economic value to the town. Thank you.
Can I say your last name again?
Raff Bun.
Raff Bun?
Raff Bun.
Oh.
Don't you want to...
Yeah. Thank you guys. Yeah, once again, I just want to clarify that, you know, we're not here to regulate the marketplace, that's not the purpose is only, the only is to focus on property use, not to regulate the marketplace. I can certainly see some of the concerns that were raised. Once again, you know, this would be a slightly different use, similar to what you see in Madison. This would primarily be focused on a high-end, long store, but it does require the same type of use permit. So that's the problem that, you know, we're having. The distinction between the onsite and offsite, both onsite, offsite, both regulated by state statute, there's no 1500-foot rule. And quite honestly, I would think that you would want to have some of these, because of the way the zoning is laid out, your business districts where these permitted uses for liquor establishments are, you certainly want them, and that's the purpose is only, in the same area. You don't, you don't want sprawl, you don't, what you're trying to do is get these, and that's the reason for zoning. Create permitted zones for permitted uses. This is a permitted use within the B3 zone in Northford Center, we're not creating any use. This is a permitted use. And it's just now, the only thing is, how close can we have them to one another? That's not really the intent of the regulation. It's more focused on property use, that's why a lot of the other towns, Durham Madison Clinton State do not have them, because it really does not promote economic development, and it tends to regulate the marketplace, which is what the purpose is only. And it gets, that's about it. The other thing, the gas stations, things like that, like I said earlier, banks, we don't regulate anything else. But we have a gas station on every corner, you see that at times, because those are permitted uses within the zone. It's a concentrated zone. And those permitted uses, whether it be gas stations, package stores, restaurants with liquor, are typically going to be concentrated, because that's what zoning does. It concentrates permitted uses in specific areas, so you do not have sprawl across the neighborhood, and putting package stores into residential areas of town.
Just to state for the record, you know, you all have my comments, but from a planning perspective, something that Harry had mentioned is, it's important when we're doing text amendment to not just look at one property, but instead look at how this could impact the entire town. So, in talking with Dom, we've met several times, I looked at the entire town, and there are 30 pockets, if you will, of zones where liquor stores could exist. So that's B1, B2, B3, I2, and I3 zones. And that's not individual parcels, but actual pockets of those zones. So thinking about that, there are maybe three to four locations where more than one package store could exist. So those that come to mind are Northford Plaza, or sorry, Northford Center, Central Plaza, somewhere along, and then, I guess, two locations, maybe on Route 80. Possibly on the same side of the street, or even across the street, on Route 80. So even though there are a lot of different areas where package stores are allowed, there are only a handful of locations, given just parcel size and existing storefronts that are vacant currently. That's not to say that development couldn't occur, but there are about, say, three to four locations where more than one package store could possibly exist. Again, you know, you have to keep in mind that, as we've discussed, there are, there's currently one more permit that exists than the town is actually allowed. So that means that one of the existing package store owners would have to relocate and move to within 1500 feet of an existing store, or they could buy out, you know, existing...
How about for restaurants? Did you take a look at those at all?
As far as...
If there's two within 1500 feet, or potentially?
Right now?
No, 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 the opportunity.
Oh, there's plenty of opportunities. So actually, one great example, for restaurants, so in Central Plaza, there's an Asian restaurant, a Japanese restaurant, I believe, that serves alcohol, but Nada's does not. So this, by different, well, by deleting the 1500-foot rule, that would enable them to both serve alcohol and have the same class permit, which would be a liquor beer permit.
For onsite.
For onsite consumption.
Onsite.
Right. Another example would be in Northford Center, the pizza restaurant currently serves alcohol, and another restaurant could go in there, or an existing restaurant could get a liquor license.
Central Pizza, do they have a, just a special wine and beer permit? Beer permit, separate?
Sorry, say that again?
Central.
Central.
Central Pizza.
I don't know. Do they serve alcohol?
I think they have beer, I don't know.
He has a Miller Lite, why you describe window?
Don't know, I don't know, he just passed away too, so...
So maybe their license is different from the Asian restaurant, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know, he doesn't sell alcohol. He might have beer only, or something.
And just another thing to think about, so I know we're talking mainly about package stores, but another offsite consumption license is a grocery store, so grocery beer, so there's currently an existing grocery beer license on Route 80, near the Agway. It's near the Hitting Kitchen. So the Hitting Kitchen is a new restaurant that went in, I think it's 2430, around there, on Fox Road. But that's a similar offsite consumption permit, so that if this deletion of the 1500-foot rule went into existence, another gas station, say maybe the Cumberland Farms, could apply for an offsite consumption grocery beer permit. So just to keep that in mind.
So what are options? I'm sorry.
Is one more comment?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like I stated earlier, none of the surrounding towns, you stated Durham Madison Clinton, none of them have, you know, 1500-foot rule restriction. And more importantly, Clinton enacted, their regulation is passed in, or restricted in January 1st. This was disgusting. They determined it was not the place to, you know, regulate the marketplace. And so that, you know, certainly the area that they're concerned about is the big trolley crossing outlet there, and they, you know, there could be a number of different lifetime permits in that establishment. And so there, I don't know.
So I think we'll, we'll keep this, the public hearing open on this, and we'll table it to our next February's meeting.
Carrie's going to work on those streamlined designs.
Yeah. So do you want to make a motion to continue the hearing? Or we don't need, no, we don't need a motion for that, so...
We have a motion for the other...
Yeah, but we're going to leave the public hearing open, so after, you know, if there's any other comments in the next meeting, or whatever, we can absorb those as well. So...
Are you okay on the 65 days?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, this is the first, you know, the first day of the public hearing, so there's plenty of time.
All right, so, let's see.
Action on Bob's...
PZ application 2014, 2015, 11 will be continued to the February 8?
5.
February 5th meeting. Okay, so where we are is, action for PZ application 2014, 15, dash, 8.
So you closed the public hearing?
Yeah, we already, that's already been closed.
So what I would recommend, this is for the self-storage unit.
Self-storage, yeah.
What I would recommend is that I could draft up a motion for the commission, and you can, you know, look at the regs one last time, and we can have additional discussion at the next meeting, if you'd like. Or I can, you know, I can draft up a motion, and then if you're ready to vote at the next meeting, you can, you can vote to approve and make those regs effective.
Yeah, if there's any particular concerns, you see, you know, if you have anything now, the pass on to Carrie, if the concerns are issues, it seems pretty concise and descriptive what they have there, but if there's any concerns, that could, you know, convey to Carrie, and then put in a draft motion.
So we'll continue that too. Bob here.
Board members, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so we'll...
For the self-storage, it will be, the public hearing is closed, but it will be continued to February 5.
Okay, perfect.
And then, 2014, 15, dash, 11, that's continued to...
Which one was that?
That's Dominix.
Dominix, that's continued to...
So I think we're off to old business, according to my agenda. So it looks like old business planning zoning application 2014, 15, 16, continuation. Any updates on that at all?
No, we're still waiting for either a report from the state, or a determination from Wetlands.
Okay. Other business, first one is update on 55er Road?
Yes, so you all, hopefully you all received a copy, I believe I emailed you a copy of the cease and desist.
Yep.
So as I have in my comments here, and just to recap, we met on January 8, and spoke with the applicant, spoke with a concerned citizen, and as a result, I issued a cease and desist after sending it to the town attorney, getting his take on it. And in the meantime, while that was being reviewed, the town engineer and I actually went out to the site. One of the concerns and claims that was made included encroachment into the wetlands. So we actually walked out there with the project manager and their surveyor, and had a GPS and the plan, so we could actually see where we were. And we did notice on the northeastern part of the site, there had been some encroachment. One of the photos that Patrick Rollins submitted was a pile of logs that had encroached into the wetlands. So the project manager then had those removed, and they reinstalled some silk fence. Really, it's riprap right now, the ground's frozen, so it's hard to stake that in. I've since been going out on a, at least weekly basis, sometimes I try and go twice a week. I've met with the project manager and the developer, and again, issued the cease and desist, it was mailed out on Friday. And they came before Wetlands last night, and it was discussed there. You'll notice, I handed out this evening, this is, you should all have copies of this. This is, if not, I'll pass it down.
We don't have one.
So this is a recommendation, planning and, or excuse me, Wetlands took a vote last night. Based on the cease and desist that was issued, they recommended that planning and zoning keep, and ZBI, keep the cease and desist in place until all conditions are met and resolved. And the Wetlands agency also had concerns about material being brought on site, and if that material had been brought on site, what it contained, if there was contaminants. So they then required that the applicant, at their own expense, hire an independent qualified professional, who's approved by the agency, to do some testing and site survey, to verify that there are no contaminants in the soil, or buried on the site.
What do they bring on site? What did they determine that they brought on site?
So there's, there's this back and forth of he-said, she-said issue of, was the material brought on site, was there not? The applicant and property owner are sticking to their grounds that no material has been brought on site. The Wetlands... The Wetlands Agency has some questions about, well, did that material exist there before? Was it brought on site? Specifically, it's brick, asphalt, concrete, pieces of PVC piping, you know, a bunch of different things.
Oh boy, yeah.
Um, so that's where the, the concern is. And it's just, it's, there's no proof that it was brought on, there's no proof that it wasn't, it's just, again, it's back and forth. So because the agency, as one member in particular, and the agency as a whole, had concerns, they just wanted to require that they hire someone to then just put the issue to rest.
Was it documented though, that they did bring the leaves in from North Haven?
The leaves, yes, but the brick, concrete, everything else, that's where there's back and forth.
The logs that you saw, are they from on-site?
They are. Well, again, I would believe that, I haven't, I didn't see the site before they started construction, but it was explained to me that the, there were trees there, so they have to clear the, the site, cut down the trees, and...
You went out there since, what, July, June?
August.
Have they been doing any more site clearing?
Well, the site's cleared.
No, the site was cleared. I mean, the construction...
So were the logs there then?
I believe so.
Yeah, or they brought in after?
I don't think there's a whole lot of them either. I went to, I did, went to the site on Monday, so...
Yeah, that's another thing, I'd like for you, so on Monday, Harry and Steve Scavo, the chairman of Wetlands, went out to see the site, because it is massive, and I thought it would just be good to have another set of eyes to, and another perspective of what the site looks like.
Wasn't supposed to be an independent, independent engineer giving weekly or monthly updates to or something?
One of the conditions talked about month, excuse me, weekly monitoring reports done by someone who's approved by the agency. We have documentation that David Dupuy, who is a project manager for Cherry Hill, was okayed by the town to do weekly monitoring, so I have those reports.
He was the contractor, he was also independent?
No, it doesn't, it did not specify independent, it just said qualified professional.
I thought they said he had to be an independent contractor.
Do you have, I don't, I don't know which condition that was, but...
Not during your cease and desist, that they have to do.
What they did last night.
Oh, right, on their, are you talking about the cease and desist, or?
No, 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 I thought...
You're talking about the original condition?
Yeah, well, he brought up, multiple things he brought up, was somebody had to be an off-site contractor to monitor, an off-site monitor, independent monitor, to monitor their...
It was stated, I'll have to look at the exact wording.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think you can have an independent person be contract person.
Well, Kerry's looking it up, I just got, when I was out there with Steve, being that the first time I was there, it was when it was fully, before they started any type of construction, or, you know, or clearing. So what we did is, we looked through, there were some trees there, you know, that they said they came from the property, it doesn't seem like to be a whole lot of them. But there was some noticeable, you know, brick, I think, and some asphalt, didn't look like a whole lot, but it doesn't matter, it was there. Yeah, no, I'm just saying, so whether it came from the site or they brought it on, I mean, we're going from, without seeing it, and next time I go back there, I have the image of how much there was, and everybody will see that.
One of the pictures looks like poured concrete floor from like a multi-store building, you know, you got the column flooring that was done.
Yeah, so that, that wasn't there, so...
It was a small pile, but it was a small pile, so.
Yeah, I think there was some compost, I don't believe that was there.
Well, I, we don't know how many trucks, truckloads of leaves he brought in from North Haven.
Right, so I didn't see that, anything like that, I saw some, you know, there were some burns or things that were not there before, but it looks like they use it to control the water a little bit better, or any runoff. But, you know, that was, again, that was the first time, but then with Steve, we did notice some materials, so that's, and I think, I'm glad Steve is gonna take action on that to have, you know, checked out to see if there's any contaminants or whatever.
Were there any, any concern with Cherry Hill running the program, with the recent article in the paper with them falsifying tax documents? Their operations?
I mean, the issue I think is, the permit, the permit has been issued, right? So now, it's how can we work to bring the site into compliance from a zoning perspective, from an environmental perspective? As far as other issues that they're having, I don't know that that falls into our purview.
Did they buy the permits that they had?
Well, because you got a cease and desist, or they can't, right now they have a cease and desist, so they haven't fulfilled anything. I mean, there's nothing more we could do, I mean, we...
You've got the cease and desist, and from now on in, it has to be, we have to see that the, everything's being followed.
Yeah.
Right.
Doesn't matter what happened before.
Exactly.
Because we can't, we absolutely don't know.
Before we, I just want to...
But from now, from the time that we put the cease and desist, there has to be the improvement, there has to be the permit on site. Every thing has to be in place.
Yep.
And now with the group, additional oversight, we have, it's on the budget for the enforcement officer, we can have some enforcing, right?
Yes. So just to raise, to, to close this issue, so in the special use permit, which is the two thousand six, two thousand seven dash twenty, condition nineteen, it says, "The owner developer shall retain the services of a commission-approved engineering monitor to inspect and report on the site work-related construction activities on a weekly basis, or more often as conditions warrant, and to provide the commission or its agent with said written reports of their findings of the site." So it doesn't say independent.
Approved by the commission.
Just someone who was approved by the commission, and there was documentation that Carol Debb had approved, you know, David Dupuy, going back to, you know, I'm not sure of the exact date, but I could find that.
So until, so the, okay, so we have the cease and desist, and...
So, and again, just to review the cease and desist, so the issues outlined in the cease and desist included the lack of the DEP permit.
Right.
Which clearly, black and white issue, they don't have it. So that's a problem.
Do we have an obligation, did you notify the DEP? Is there an obligation for the town to notify the DEP?
Um, I don't believe that there's an obligation, I haven't reached out to them yet.
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I assumed from Mr. Rowland's communication with them that they, they were aware.
Chairman, could I have an opportunity?
I just wanted to go over, sorry, just the other two, just the other two things. The, the approval for, well, again, this is the DEP, they need all state and federal permits, and the issue of cleaning up and removing off-site any abandoned junk and debris, that was one of the conditions. So that may be a gray area. I would expect them to appeal this to ZBI, which is why the Wetlands Agency recommended that both planning and zoning and ZBI keep this enforced.
Yes.
So that's where, that's where they'll stand. And then we also recommended here that they retain the services of a commission-approved engineering monitor to inspect and report on the site work, to ensure that the site is stable, erosion isn't occurring. And in my last discussion with Doug Anderson, they're, they're working towards that, to hire someone.
Are they checking the properties, making sure nobody's working there?
Because no one's with.
Working on the property?
So I got a call today saying that there has been activity happening there. Kurt and I went out there this morning, I didn't see any trucks leaving the site when we were there, I saw them doing work on the site, like moving material around. I need to put, I talked with Doug Anderson, he wasn't sure exactly what was going on, so I need to call the project manager to find out exactly what was, what they're doing. The question for the commission is, can they remove material off-site, as long as they don't bring material on?
Isn't the site closed? Cease and desist is not more work.
There's no, I've coordinated with, with the fire marshal, so there's no blasting, they need a blasting permit, and I said, "We have to hold and wait until we bring things into compliance before they start blasting and doing any additional work."
So the thought is...
We have some finished product that's there.
So the thought is like, if, if we're asking them to remove stuff from the site, so, and you have a cease and desist, you can't do both. So do we allow, I mean, I mean, is there, is there, is there a...
Sort of the thought, I mean, at least my thought, in talking to Kerry, if they come back with a proposed person, engineer, to do the monitoring, to inspect and verify and come up with any compliance issues in terms of erosion control, they've done a lot, and they've taken steps forward, but just to have that independent look, come back to the commission, and they should be able to do that pretty quick with, you know, with the name and qualifications, and say, "Okay, commission, you know, the commission approves of this firm person to do it." Then they go ahead and do it, and then I would think as part of it, removal of material, they should be coming back with, "Okay, we have an issue with on-site material that we should be getting off-site, here's our plan to get it done," and run it by the commission in terms of timeframe to do it, and verification of what doesn't belong there. And then come back to you and report to the commission for, "This is our plan." Because you don't want to, if there's on-site material, there should be a reasonable timeframe to have it taken care of.
But should we, should we not have them do anything until we get the permits, though? Like, I mean, nothing at all? Is there...
Well, I would think, if we're pushing them to come back to the commission, we meet every two weeks, I would let it stand. Don't do anything until you come back with a report, and here's what we want to do to go ahead and get into compliance. And here's our timeframe.
So right now we're saying they should be doing anything there?
So it says that...
That's what the R says. So I'm just making sure, yeah, I just want to make sure they can't, no removal of anything, they can't be doing anything.
It says, right, it says in the cease and desist, "You are hereby ordered to stop activity on the site and take action to bring the site into compliance, including." Now, the one kind of loophole that we noticed is that you are ordered to cease and desist from the preceding violation, you must do so within ten days of receipt of this order. So I sent it Friday, a return receipt requested, if they don't pick it up from the post office, you know, then they, maybe, that's where there's the lag. I did email it as well, but I, you know, I don't know how much standing that has.
Well, if you, if you don't get a, if you don't get a receipt back in the next couple days...
Then it's generally follow-up when the town attorney's office, if someone has to be served. I mean, that's what I've seen done in the past. Because that, that's where, this, this goes to the town attorney as well.
Yeah, right.
In terms of if there's non-compliance.
Continued on that pattern.
Right.
So the cease and desist was mailed?
Mailed, certified mailed, return receipt requested.
And email.
So they can sit in the post office for how many days without being picked up?
I'm not sure, I don't know how long they hold on to it for.
Five, five days, five days in the name, ten days, but could I, could I speak? I, I'd like to apologize for kind of running rush on, Commissioner Dulac wasn't here last week, but I thought it was important for me to get the twenty-two A nineteen and the information to the board, and in my letter to Mr. Paulus the next day, I actually gave you great kudos for using your foresight and wisdom in actually issuing the cease and desist, because I think that it does take a great deal of courage to stand up to somebody who's violating in the, in the nature in which they're doing. The twenty-two A nineteen also includes the ability for me to participate under code section eight dash eight N, and I took out a court order this morning, and I met with Mr. Paulus on the telephone today, and I asked for a meeting with Attorney Gismondi, so that we could fully understand, not only with the chairman of this board, but the chairman of the Wetlands, what that actually entails. And what I have done by filing the twenty-two A nineteen is I am now a party to this action. So no settlement...
So, sorry, can I just, I just want to clarify something. So twenty-two A dash nineteen, I believe, is a Wetlands act that...
But this is, the zoning has soil and erosion controls and other issues, and the Wetlands permit is also predicated on the planning and zoning. So if you don't have a Wetlands plan, you don't have planning and zoning. So I'm only speaking specifically to soil and erosion and issues which affect your permit, including the environmental engineers. We'll come back to that in a minute.
But, but just to clarify.
Twenty-two A nineteen is clearly environmental only.
It's environmental only. At the Wetlands meeting last night, and actually going back to the December meeting, when Mr. Rowland submitted initial information stating an intervener status, I had questions about, can anyone just intervene at any time? Or I thought there really had to be an application, where someone was applying for a permit, or there had to be some kind of proceeding. Since then, I've researched it, spoken with several attorneys, and they've said that there has to be a proceeding, something to intervene. So I've met with Mr. Rowland numerous times, I'm happy to continue to meet with them and, you know, convey information back and forth. Just as far as intervener status, I don't believe that he has it.
So that's why I requested a meeting with Attorney Gismondi, but you just said the magic word, it's any proceeding, and I'll read the first sentence of the state code. "Any administrative licensing or other proceeding," and that other proceeding, this letter happens to actually be written by Attorney Brooks, who for eighteen years was the attorney general for the state of Connecticut, Eland Wetlands, and the Department of DEP, and actually teaches planning and zoning and wetlands law for the state DEP, and is now in private practice. And so twenty-two A nineteen says, "In any administrative licensing or other proceeding, blah, 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 may intervene as a party, as a party on the filing." So that actually inserts me into, and I can give, and I'll give Attorney Gismondi, all sorts of cases where the town boards have failed to allow or to participate. And in my last letter to, to Mr. Paulus, I included, included a court case called Brey Court, where the town actually made a settlement with the, with the offending violator under a cease and desist, under extremely identical situation, and that was actually thrown out. They had to go back and redo that court case. So I don't, I don't really want to belabor those issues. I think that the board hopefully would at least want to hear a few of the points that I think are actually salient under the situation.
What I'm, what I'm, you talking with John Jesman and stuff, that's great, we have the cease and desist.
Right.
I mean, any further information right now is not really, I don't think really important.
Actually, the...
On the agenda is an update on Follow Road, right?
Yeah.
I think, I think the commissioner, who went out to the site, and Kerry, who's been working with him, and Kurt, are just gonna update us on this. I'm not sure we're going beyond this tonight.
We don't have any, there's nothing we can do right now.
Yeah, so with all due respect...
The couple of points that I'd like to bring out, one is...
Let us, I think we need to discuss what we're, what the action is on our agenda here with the commission.
I, I, I beg to differ, I think about, we've got an awful lot more in front of you, and I don't think...
I think you follow up the rules, and you were asked to make a statement.
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't want to get, this isn't a, this is what I'm saying, we have a cease and desist.
This is just an agenda item for an update.
What I would suggest that you do is that if you, if you're working with the town planner and town manager, they update us, and if there's action that we can take, then we will, we'll take that action. So not to belate, you take your time and our time, so, but we will, I mean, that was the point, we went out there, we checked the site.
Who did you, who did you serve the notice to?
I don't, I don't know.
What do you mean?
Who, who is the party that got cease and desisted?
Well, the applicant and the property owner.
What about Cherry Hill, who admitted in writing that they brought in leaves to the property?
The, well, it's only the applicant and the owner, so the applicant is, that's, that's my answer, the applicant and the owner.
But did Cherry Hill not break town laws? True?
But it's, yeah, but on the property, that's, that's the...
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Kep, with the next port of business, if we're done with that. Capital Improvement Program and How to Involve Planning and Zoning.
Did you volunteer us for something?
I did not. This is, I think you all have a memo, hopefully in your packet, from Anthony Esposito. So Anthony has watched many of planning and zoning commission meetings, and he was very concerned about the issues, I guess, and questions that the commission had about the process. So he wanted to reach out to you through me to say, what, what can he do better, how can we include planning and zoning in the process, at what point in the process would you like to be involved, so that next year it can be unanimously approved?
He's trying to get rid of that one that's sent him, oh, every year. I can't call who that is.
It was Fran last night.
Got him, oh, it was always with you.
I tried, I...
He's probably watching this one too.
No, no, that's good.
We will watch, we will watch it afterwards.
No, I mean, my whole thing is that we, we just get it towards the end. So, I mean, and we, at that point, there's, it's, it's already been vetted, circulated, there's not much, there's not much we can do.
They're looking for rubber stamping.
Yeah.
And it's getting, it's like a courtesy, and they want us to go along with it. You don't know anything beforehand.
Right, and then I think Anthony's reaching out, just trying to explain the process, it goes through the town council, the budgetary process, everybody puts in their five years of sort of wants or needs list, council acts on them, puts them in, in order in terms of capital improvements, what they can fund for the current year, the current year only. I mean, that, that's always the key one that comes back, is what's in the, the current year budget, and the other ones are, still remain as a wish list or a concept. And I think Anthony's just trying to reach out, do you want to participate more in the process?
I think maybe if we can just be updated, and maybe a summary instead of just a budget with a bunch of numbers, a five... with a bunch of numbers, or five, I mean, to pour through that, just a summary of, you know, maybe what we're, you know, what the status is, is through the process. Now, I, I think some people try to go to some of the meetings or watch or whatever, but in case we can't, but when we're here to group, maybe have, and at the end of the day, maybe have a summary, summary. You know, this is what we're looking for, this is what we're planning on doing this year, this is what we tabled to next year, even though you kind of can see in the numbers, but set up a big stack, you know, that, well, Kerry will have...
By the time you get it...
You know, Kerry have to move it out.
It doesn't really mean anything to us when we get...
By the time you get to you, you're correct. It's a rubber stamp.
Five to six pages of numbers.
Right.
What do you, you know, you want a decision that night.
Right.
Well, you know, about what?
Yeah.
You always get the second crack at it before they go for, when they go in for the funding.
Right.
And they can always override us.
So, I mean, that would be the...
The problem also too is, you know, the budget is approved in May. The capital improvement follows that. That's in October usually by the time you see it. And it's all pretty much done and in the budget.
Yeah, so if we just get like a summary when they're going through it.
Anything early on for early comments?
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm reading. You'd like to be able to comment early on rather than just at the end.
Exactly.
Okay.
So Anthony, we're on board. All right. Next order of business is, remove the decking of the original bridge at Schwantz Farm and convey the open space to North Branford Land Trust.
I thought I saw something.
No, I think we talked about it, but I don't...
We did talk about it. And since then, I looked at the permits that were approved because I just needed to check to see if we had to modify an existing permit or, you know, strike any conditions that spoke about the bridge. There was nothing in the final approved application that spoke to the bridge. So as a result, I drafted a motion which pretty much just talks about allowing the removal of the decking. Again, it's just the decking, it's not the bridge abutments. Last night at the wetlands meeting, the agency voted to approve pretty much the exact same proposal. The only thing that was different of their motion was the application number, obviously. So again, it's just removal of the decking, keeping the bridge abutments in place, and that is required essentially in order for the North Branford Land Trust to take control of the open space because they have liability concerns.
And truthfully, the key is, I mean, the, the land trust is the right body to take it.
Well, absolutely.
The liability was their concern by eliminating the bridge deck. That goes away, they're happy.
So they're just taking the deck off, but they're leaving the framing.
They're leaving the abutments at the end, along the river.
Yep.
And that's more of a wetlands issue just because the wetlands didn't want you to change the characters of the, of the river channel.
All right. But the sides are coming off, right? The metal sides? They're taking the whole, the whole complete deck?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I haven't seen it.
And, and the new bridge is actually in. I don't know if anyone's taking a ride, you know, you can take a ride to there and see what, what's going on.
Do you want me to read this? All right. I move to approve the removal of the decking of the existing pedestrian bridge, leaving the abutments in place at 1775 Middletown Avenue, Schwantz Farm subdivision, Assessor map 72, lot 12, to enable the North Branford Land Trust to take over ownership of the open space. Owner, Sunwood Development Corporation, applicant agent, Sunwood Development Corp., Bob Weedeman Jr. as part of the project which was approved under P&amp;Z application 2012 slash 13 dash 13.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion?
No.
See you in that on favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Passes five zero.
That was a motion by Bill, second by Fran. And then, let's see, other business. Do you want to do the draft plan?
Yes, the budget.
Yep.
Let's not make it to $20,000. We get 30 bucks this year or what?
Or you can get the marketing, right?
That what we get?
Right.
We did?
I'm on.
So pretty much, we've, all departments and boards and commissions have been instructed to just continue funding as it was last year, so no, no increases. The one thing I would like to just draw your attention to is the third page, which is the ZEO. And just talk with the commission to get your take on having a zoning enforcement officer. Not necessarily focusing on, right now it says eight hours per week and, you know, the total hours and rate. Right now, I'm doing town planning and zoning and wetlands. Given just the sheer amount of work, I just thought that the commission might want to discuss the idea of having a zoning enforcement officer. I don't know how closely you worked with Bud when he was here, but having someone at least even part-time, I think would be immensely helpful. So I, if you have any...
I think we agree.
You're doing this now?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so this budget, so I wanted to get your feedback and your, your input. This has to be submitted to the town manager at the end of next week.
And I'll go over a little history just for you in terms of ZEO through the years. I mean, it started out, used to be a part-time, about 20-hour position. And it's changed over the years. People left. I think we went through a couple. Then it became part of the bill, the billing official was a zoning enforcement officer. He also, he had an assistant at the time. Positions got eliminated. Then we got this, went to, the concept was to go back to the separate ZEO. Town payroll, 19 hours per week. We had a hard time finding one to serve at, at the rate we offered and, and the hours we offered. We ended up, last one was Bud Beckia. He was a certified ZEO. He came from Westbrook, he did Bramford as well. He had, he had the qualifications. He was been doing it, he started out three mornings a week, 12 hours a week, under a contractual basis. That's the best we could do. Then it got reduced to budgetary to, to, two days per week. And the idea, and I know the town attorney always said, there should be a separation, you know, planning and, and as ZEO are sort of, a lot of times, they may be in conflict. Zoning is enforcing something, planning is trying to promote something. There certainly has to be dialogue, but there should be that separation. Whether this goes anywhere or not with the budget, who knows? But the question is, you know, what's the commission's thought? It's, it was in the commission budget in the past.
We've discussed this before. And we absolutely do need a zoning enforcement officer. I mean, you know, there's so many issues. Carrie can't possibly cover them all. Neither could you. You need somebody who is, you know, is going to enforce. It's just like the little...
A-frame signs? Are you talking about the A-frame signs?
Yeah, the A-frame signs. I mean, it's a, you know, it's not a big issue, but at one point, they were just one after the other after the other. And then we had a zoning enforcement about it and they got alleviated some, but now they're all back again. Whether I think it's a terrible thing or not a terrible thing, it's just one issue. Even with this new thing on Cyril Road, you know, if you had a zoning enforcement officer, he should be able to go out there with the, with the...
Follower.
Huh?
Follower?
Yeah, follower.
Yeah, follower.
Whether, he should be able to go out there with the wetlands officer and then report to Carrie what's going on. As part of zoning enforcement.
Carrie's a wetland, so...
Yeah.
So all three of us are going.
Regulations are great, but if you're not enforcing them...
Right.
Well, it's the other thing too.
You need someone to enforce the regulations.
Because time-wise, if you get, you know, one major issue between court time and getting ready, I mean, it chews up a lot of time and, and I think over the years...
Reprachal require here. I think we all pretty much...
The only question I want to ask is, is, can we partner with another town?
That's the mind thing.
Well, what I was saying, I mean, the ones, a lot of, we tried. We reached out before Carrie, because someone that was a resident of town, was a part-time ZEO in another town. We thought he would be a perfect fit.
And what happened?
Um, he got committed to, he couldn't make the commitment. I mean, he would have been an ideal fit. And, and the idea is to get somebody that's working in another town, part-time and...
Right.
Well, have we talked to their planning and zoning and asked them who they have?
Well, I mean, we advertised, we interviewed, and the candidate pool just didn't pan out.
So, so what's our option? I'm just going to, so...
The option is put back in for, for a part-time ZEO.
Are we, are we limited to eight outright hours? I mean, is it, can we go higher and see?
I would say try and go higher and then see how it falls.
Eight hours is worthless.
I mean, I would say you've got to go below 20 because you don't want to pay, I mean, usually it's a 19-hour...
Probably should get 20 down anyway.
You put in, the manager has the first look at it. He's going to look at it and take his look at it, depending on if it survives his cut. Then it goes to the town council, but at least it points out the need and, when they have the budgetary meetings, it's a good time if someone, the commissions, are there to support it.
Well, you know, that's...
Do we want to, do we want to make, do you want to make a recommendation?
20 hours.
Do you need a recommendation for the committee as a whole or, you don't, how many hours or anything like that? Or you wanted to say?
20 hours. Well, I mean, usually it's 19 because that's, that's going to come down to 19. If, if the direction, if you prove it with the addition of a ZEO, part-time ZEO for 19 hours, then that's for the commission. It's the commission's request.
Just a, it's a recommendation, we're not...
I just want to say one thing about this is that going back a few weeks ago when the, when the church came in and I said then, we cannot be, we need the money in our department. We cannot be, oh, you know, too bad, you know, they don't have to do it.
Right.
We need to stick by our guns with it.
And I think, and I think at one time, Fran, and now I'm recalling is that, I don't know if it was like maybe two or three years ago when we actually raised the fees a little bit up and it, we dropped some down, I think we dropped some down and raised some up, whatever it was. But we did it so we could bring in more monies for our budget.
But it doesn't seem to, if we don't carry it out, it doesn't do any good what it says.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
Did we approach all the surrounding towns? We got Branford, East Haven, North Haven, Branford, Guilford.
Well, they're full-time, they're full-time. We've talked, I've talked to them over the years and actually recently because there used to be a part-time person in Branford that went to full, and she went to full-time with our town. I mean, people that we knew about, we certainly tried to reach out. A lot of the, I mean, the ones I know, a lot of the Connecticut River Valley towns, a lot of those are all just part-time and they might work a couple of towns. We might try to reach out, but we certainly did advertise it and it wasn't all the appropriate publications trying to get the word out. It's a, it really is a hard position to fill, to get a qualified zoning enforcement officer that, that's certified.
If it's not full-time.
Yeah.
Carrie's, Carrie's certified.
Oh, he said certifiable. Yeah, that's what's not so late.
So let's make a recommendation. So we want to make a 19 hours.
I make a recommendation to propose a zoning enforcement officer at 19 hours per week.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Do you want to, do they need a vote on the whole budget?
Well, we did that separate.
Will that be included in, in the budget afterwards?
Well, no, we're changing because we're making 19 hours.
Okay, 19 hours, yeah, okay.
All right. Any other highlights that we have?
The only other thing is just the, the training. I don't know if you've taken advantage of going to seminars in the past. I've just carried over that amount, but I included also in front of you this evening this Connecticut Land Use seminar. It's in March, it's in Middletown. I think it will be really interesting. It's a full-day event, it's a Saturday, but they, they highlight talking about planning commissions, special permanent site plan review, intervenor status. So it sounds really interesting if you would like to go.
What's the date on that one?
March 21st.
The last time that we were supposed to be going someplace, didn't they tell us that they weren't going to give us the money?
Of the budget?
We all expressed, a bunch of us expressed interest and cut all of the money.
Yeah.
But that was, I think that was for...
That was the dinner thing though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the dinner.
It's also educational.
I would, I would be interested.
Okay, great.
The other thing on here, and there's not much in there, but we just sort of got it together, objectives for the future year. It's good, you know, because it conveys what, what the goals are. It conveys into downtowns of the town. I mean, certainly the courage, good development, but if there's any particulars that any of you would like to see put on there, I mean, because it really does set out the path for the upcoming year. Certainly, I mean, I would say is some of the, the regulations do need updates statutorily. We're, we're out of date for some of these things. And then Carrie and I have talked about that, just at least to bring us into compliance with the current state statutes. If there's any other particulars you want to add, we could easily just put them in there. I'm sorry.
Does your watch ever hear?
Oh, yes. On the last page, I just went on, oh wait, it's got zeros, never mind. Okay. Now, I was wondering why it says ZEO office contractual services and ZEO court time. Yeah, yeah.
Because, because it used to be contractual and then trying to put it in as a pay person. That may get switched around, but at least put it somewhere.
Okay.
So we need, so we, oh, go ahead. We want to make, so we want to make a, we just recommend, recommend, recommend that be an approval.
Or can we approve this if we're asking for put money into the ZEO?
Are you saying there?
No, but we made it to 19 hours.
Prove with changes?
Yeah.
Make, recommend, recommendation to approve with our change, right?
With the changes, yeah.
I recommend to approve the budget, town budget, with the increase from eight hours to 19 hours for the zoning enforcement officer.
A second.
Any discussion?
The budget just had a dollar amount, didn't say how many hours before.
It had eight hours.
No, it had, yeah, in the description, yeah.
Eight hours, 52.2.
Something like that.
50.2.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Passes five zero.[1642.33] Passes five to zero.
Um, Carrie, do we have anybody now going to the regional council? Because the first one we had is, was no longer on board.
No, thank you for bringing that up. The last meeting that they had was actually January 8th, which was our last meeting, so they had requested that I ask the Commission, I don't know if anyone is interested, I can find out when the next meeting dates are.
I used to be on it, and then because of my work, I just couldn't get to those evening meetings, but I retired now. So unless somebody else wants to do it, and I know that Doug is no longer-
Right.
Crowned.
You know.
You're willing and able?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, that's, that's good.
You going to have time to do that between your golf game?
My golf, you mean my roller skating.
Golf games, you know, you're retired now, you've got to get a set of clubs.
Your alpaca is in roller skating.
No, my roller skating cost me the, the juggling.
What do you got for a town's planners report?
Um, no.
Are you, what are you right now, planner, wetlands? It's always easy to switch out.
Planner, right now.
Okay, all right.
Planner. Um, no report.
No report?
Anyone, everyone here, the next few mini-meetings?
God willing.
Yeah.
It's your turn, Charlie.
I'll be.
No, 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 I mean it's-
Oh, well, I had a question to ask.
Oh, okay.
I was surprised to see in our package a letter from the, the land wetlands. Because I thought we ended up taking the propane tanks.
Oh.
And are they going to start picking it up and try to run it?
Yet to be determined. So the state issued a letter saying that they can review the application, however they would prefer that the town handle it.
They're going to take care of their budget deficit with it.
Right, so they would charge the town for everything. When I spoke with the, this gentleman, Bob Gilmore from the state, he said that the cost could be tens of thousands of dollars if the state were to review it.
Oh, you're kidding me.
Because it would be fringe salary, attorney's fees, and then it could take up to nine months.
And they have, it's a public hearing though, right?
Well, it could be.
It could be.
They also, like, the letter said, they'd just rather you resolve it. This is pretty straightforward in their eyes.
They also said that, right, there aren't really any big wetlands issues in their eyes, so the town council is now looking at potentially appointing additional people, but that's been tabled, so we'll see.
Is the planning and zoning back functioning, I mean, the wetlands functioning again?
We, we have four members. Frank Pogano is the newest member, he had been on, then he went to assessors, and then he came back. However, of those four, two recused themselves, so we still only have two. We need three.
Well, how many people are on the board total?
Four.
Four. Well, how many can be on the board?
Oh, there's five.
Five, with two alternates. So we have three spaces.
If, if they can get appointments, that may change it. I mean, and then certainly the, the push has been out, the, it's hard to get a lot of people from the boards and commissions.
If they made the proposal to the Commission and they don't act on it, doesn't it automatically pass in 65 days?
Not wetlands.
Not wetlands.
Planning and zoning, you're under different parameters, but the wetlands, it doesn't.
It just becomes void, inactive. So that's what happened, which is why they had to now go to the state. And then the next question is, do they have to reapply to wetlands, or can the old application be remanded back?
Well, wasn't that what I questioned you about in the email? It seemed like the way I read it, that, I forget what the dates were, but they really did need to apply again. But you said, no, they didn't, so I thought, well, maybe I just read the whole thing wrong.
Well, it's not, it's not clear. This has never happened before, and so October 31st was the date that the 65-day window was up.
Right.
So there's been quite a bit of time between now and then.
Exactly. That's why I questioned it.
There, there's a whole procedural legal question, and, you know, how does the state get it back to us, and what does it do to the buck? And, you know, we certainly need a little advice if it goes that way, depending on how it goes.
Okeydokey. Charlie?
I'm with you, Jerry.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Me standing up, giving you any-